Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
And next on the agenda, we'll consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 for the period ending November 22nd, 2019, and purchase card claims paid for the same period. Is there a motion to approve?
It's not moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner West. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And passes unanimously. Next, we will look at approval of the minutes from November 26, 2019 county board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Look, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The minutes are adopted. I have no chair's remarks for you today, so we'll move on to committee reports right away, and we will start with the management committee report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the regular agenda, it is all informational, but we have two items that are additional. First item is adopting Resolution 2019 M4. It's approving the tentative agreement between the County of Anoka and Law Enforcement Labor Services, Inc., and this is representing the 911 dispatchers for the calendar years 2020 through 2022.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Or is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next item.
B. Consider approving the elimination of unfunded positions that were listed below. There are 22 positions, and we are just taking them off the record because they haven't been filled.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just commentary, since we just got out of that meeting, and just a lot of work went into this, and so just a comment of appreciation for all department heads and our finance department to whittle this, I don't say whittle this down, but to really be efficient with these 22 positions.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamache.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to thank staff, I wanted to thank Administrator Siviraja as well. This was a change from what we've done in the past, and I know that there was some probably, not reluctance, but just some question from staff internally that I think with Commissioner Siviraja and the finance staff and their conversations with people to let them know that this board is supportive, this board is ready to hire when it's necessary, but we wanted to move these things off so that they just weren't sitting there for long periods of time. We're always ready to move forward on hiring when it's necessary, and this is just a way to kind of clear, I think, some of the books, to say. And so I appreciate the work that they all did in that regard, and to make it more comfortable for our internal staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner West.
I was going to basically say what Mike said, but the good result from this is, it's probably not going to be something we have to make a decision about in the future, because we're just not going to let positions sit there unfilled.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you. Just another follow-up with what Commissioner Gamache said, that this board will have to be prepared, and we are prepared to be supportive, because this does take a little bit of some financial creativity out of departments, and so when they do come up for a need, then, you know, we are going to have to step up to the plate, and we are able to do that and willing to do that, and so just to emphasize that of what Commissioner Gamache had said. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes as well.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And while we're on the additional agenda, I think we'll stay there and move right into the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on December 5th, and we have three action items. The first is the committee recommends the county board approve a contract with Morrison County for medical examiner services for a one-year term with automatic renewals resulting in a multi-year agreement. The anticipated new annual revenue is about $40,000, and I'll move that.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second by Commissioner Look? Further discussion?
Commissioner West.
Sorry, Commissioner West had the second. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes. Next item.
The committee recommends the county board approve a contract with Beltrami County for medical examiner services for a one-year term, at which time it will be reviewed for renewal, anticipated new revenue of $70,000 to $80,000. So with the addition of Beltrami and Morrison, that will bring our medical examiner's office up to 28 counties where they're the named medical examiner. So I will move this.
Excellent. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner, further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes. Item three.
The committee recommends the county board amend our 2020 Anoka County legislative platform to add in the supporting with others category, a legislative proposal from Ramsey County regarding I-35E and County Road J reconstruction. This was also previously in our platform that we supported with others, and Ramsey County is the lead on this item.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gamache, is there? Second by Commissioner West, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And that passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. We'll move back to the regular agenda, where we'll turn to the Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, thank you. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee, we have a chair report here, and before I get into that, I just want to, it reminds me of kind of the holiday season, in that everybody's out shopping and spending a lot of money, and this is an opportunity to save some money, so it's a great, it's a great opportunity that we have before us here, but I'll read it off. The chair recommends the county board adopt Resolution Number 2019 F7, awarding the sale of general obligation capital improvement plan refunding bond series 2020A. And the aggregate principal amount, and we'll get into that, and I've asked Cory to come and kind of explain the details of this and some of the good news that we're going to experience here, so.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name's Cory Camp from the Finance and Central Services Division Manager. Yes, we had a bond sale yesterday, competitive sale, and I've got Elizabeth Bergman from Baker Tilly here, I'm going to bring her up in a moment, and she'll kind of walk you through the results of the sale. The positive thing is the market has gone, went in our favor. I think we were looking at about a 50 basis point reduction from our estimate, which means our savings went from about $960,000 to about 1.25 million. So it increased our savings significantly, it was a good day in the market, and so I'm going to have Elizabeth come up, kind of walk you through the mechanics of the sale, and see if you have any questions, so.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here, and congratulations, you had a tremendously successful sale yesterday. I think the results were very strong. So just want to talk to you about the big picture, and then answer any questions that you might have. So yesterday, we sold just over $10 million of bonds, refunding bonds, refunding the county's 2011A and 2011, excuse me, 2012A bonds for interest savings. The winner of the bid was Piper Joffrey. We got nine bids, which, given the market conditions, there's a lot of municipal supply in the market right now, so having the attention of nine bidders, which was very strong and a good result. And the true interest cost was 1.297 percent, or excuse me, 1.279 percent, very low. Just to give you a little bit of context, this time last year, you sold bonds with a similar average life, and the interest rate on those was 2.61, so significantly lower than a year ago. And obviously, that has to do with Anoka County's strong credit rating, the AA+ from Moody's Investor Service that was affirmed as part of, or excuse me, from Standard &amp; Poor's, wrong agency, that was affirmed as part of this process, and then also the very good mood of the market. I think investors right now are trying to get rid of money before the end of the year, and as a result, they are really sharpening their pencils and giving good results. As Cory said, you had 1.25 million dollar savings over the life of the bonds, about $180,000 a year that saved in interest cost just by doing this refunding. I understand you have a copy of the bid tab, which is the next slide here, and it's this, you probably have a white version of this, but showing all of the bidders. You can see there that the 1.279 was very closely followed by your, the second highest bidder at a 1.287, so very close bids, and those nine bidders reflect a number of financial institutions, because often they bid in what we call a syndicate, so they bid together. So overall, just an extremely favorable result, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Gamache.
First of all, thank you. The, you mentioned last year, what would our savings have been last year, and maybe Cory has that information, I'm not sure, I'm just kind of comparing what last year did now to this.
So last year was new money issue, it wasn't a refunding, but it had a similar length, and so that allows them to be sort of an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have the double, AA reading?
Yep, AA+.
AA+.
Okay. Oh, AA+.
AA+.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We do appreciate your work, and very pleased with our savings.
Super, congratulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I just want to remind everyone that this county board has been very active in trying to identify the bonds that we have out there that can be refinanced, and whenever possible, we are excited to do so. Obviously, it's a savings, in this case, it's a rather large savings, and, you know, someone might ask, well, what do you do with these types of savings? Well, for future budget years, we use that to perhaps offset future budget expenditures, and it's truly a, I mean, it's a great time when we can look at higher interest rate bonds, refinance them to lower interest rate, and save money in the process, so.
Thank you. With that, I'm looking for an offer of the resolution.
I'll offer it.
The resolution has been offered. My Commissioner Look, is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Cory. Thanks, Matt.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome and thank Ray Zarin for being here, he's our Met Council Representative. It's good to have you in the boardroom. Next, we will consider Resolution 2019-139, county board adoption of a final tax levy and final operating budget and capital improvement budget for the 2020 program year for Anoka County. That item is before us, and I am looking for a motion to approve. The resolution has been offered. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is always the one time of year where we have this tough vote on levies, and it always has been difficult. I've been involved in approving levies going back to 2001. I'll let everybody else figure out how many years that happens to be by now. But this year, we came to the point when we had a workshop last week, or earlier this week, I guess it was, where we were looking at a 4.97 percent levy, and that was a levy that we had set back in September, based on the information that we had from our chair, our finance committee, and I thought they did a very good job on getting us to that point this year. Actually, I thought this year was one of the best years that we've had in sitting down, discussing everything that was on the table, every issue and every option that we might have, so I was very appreciative of that. And I understand that we'll be doing some more discussions next year, and I'm very appreciative of that, too, because I'd like to get started as early as possible on the next year's budget, on 2021's budget, but it's always good to have conversations as to where we're going and what we can do. After that good discussion, we were able to find 1% decrease, and so what we have before us today is the 3.97 percent. That did require us to do some things. We had to move some things and take some money out of asset preservation, which is always kind of, I'm always a little concerned about that, because I think we have a good asset preservation plan, and I think we have a good fund, so I didn't really want to see too much of that. So we had a good conversation, the entire board did, with each other to discuss how this was going to work. And that also included, you know, some other things that would come up, and I did have a discussion this morning after our management meeting to, with some finance staff, just to clarify some things, because I didn't want to make, I wanted to make sure I understood all of our changes, not just the Rum River issue that we have, the security fund for cameras, and the Emerald Ash Bar, which we really, really talked a lot about, and then also our salary and market rate adjustment, which we also talked a lot about. But I'm confident that the 1% cut to the 3.97 percent won't hurt us. It's always good to be able to reduce, if possible, and I was discussing this earlier and a couple days ago, that I might vote against this, and it would have been the first time I ever voted against a budget. But after having rethinking and going back in my mind as to what we talked about in the workshop, and having a discussion this morning with staff, I'm confident now that we can do this. I would say that as we move forward, we have to be even more careful every year with these types of, I don't know, changes, moving things from one place to another, taking things from funds to pay for other things. We are going to have this salary and market rate adjustment plan that we put in place is a continual thing, so it's not a one-time, and that makes me concerned, but I'm not concerned enough to vote against this budget. I think we can do this, I think the council, or the board, understands some of the risks that we're taking. I don't think they're out of line, as in that we're putting anything at true risk, but it's a bit of a risk, so we're talking, and we'll have to have some good discussion next year. But I will be in favor of the budget, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, too, for pointing out the difference of what the preliminary budget was and what we're presenting today. And last night, at the truth in taxation meeting, you know, you said it just sounds like 1%, but it is a big deal, this took a lot of work. And first, I would just like to thank our finance department and all of our department heads. This took nine months of budget process to come to this number, and I fully support our preliminary budget, which again was at 4.97 percent levy increase, because it was well-vetted and also a conservative solution. So we can have this option, we did have a really good discussion about this in workshop, but voting for the 3.9 percent levy this year will give us two options for 2021. We will either have to start at a higher levy percentage next year to make up for what we are losing this year, or cut our level of services currently, or maybe a combination of both. The levy is designed to fund repeat annual expenses, it's what allows us to do business. Our asset preservation is designed to fund one-time projects, like the Centennial Library, but it also helps to protect us from future unforeseen situations. So one example, one of the examples this year that we looked at was cybersecurity, so really ensuring that our IT department is supported as their needs continue to grow in need and also expense. In Baltimore, this year, their data breach cost the city $18.2 million, and the average data breach cost has increased from $3 million in 2006 to over $8 million in 2019. And this county, as well as other governmental bodies, is and will continue to be vulnerable to cyber attacks. Fiscally responsible, this is one of our pillars, and a lot of people, you know, when they think about being fiscally responsible, I think they think of being frugal, and when it comes to other people's money, I think being frugal is a very good thing, but it also means being responsible for the consequences of our financial decisions. And District Four, Fridley, Columbia Heights, Hilltop, and part of Spring Lake Park, we need our current levels of service. I am not willing to be responsible to close a library or a license center in my district or in anyone else's district. I am not willing to be responsible to not have our sheriff's department be able to hire deputies to keep us safe. I'm not willing to be responsible to not adequately fund our attorney's office to prosecute felonies, and I'm not willing to put any area of our staff in a position where they have to continue to provide services to a growing county and not be able to fund their needs. Voting for a 3.9 percent levy, I do not believe is the right thing to do for citizens or our staff, and I ask my colleagues to please reconsider.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Further comments? Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I should clarify that the 3.97 does not cut license centers or, you know, police staff or any of that sort of thing, so let's be clear on that topic, that essentially, the 1% difference from 4.97 to 3.97 is using asset preservation funds to pay for one-time expenditures that were included in a budget that probably isn't appropriate. We use our asset preservation for one-time expenditures. When we first set up these funds, that is, the asset preservation IT fund, building fund, they were designed to be spent down. Since that time, we've kind of taken asset preservation and kind of morphed it into a little bit of a rainy day fund, and also a county bank fund. So let's say that a department wants to make an investment, they would otherwise go out for bonding, we pull it from the asset preservation fund, and we don't bond, and then over time, they pay that back to the county, to that fund. It is all within the county. So it's kind of an internal bank fund, if you will. This isn't the first time that we've taken money from the asset preservation for the levy, and it probably isn't going to be the last time. It depends on the balance that's in there, and currently, right now, I think we do have a healthy balance, we have some safeguards in there for possible future expenditures that may or may not happen. So I think we're in a good position. But let's be clear, these are all taxpayers' dollars that are in these funds. That means, do you continue to build up a fund with taxpayers' dollars, or do you in some capacity return it to the taxpayer, which is in fact what the 4.7, 4.97 to 3.97 is, is we're returning it to the taxpayers. You know, it was said that this is a stressful time, budget discussion is a stressful time, I think it is for staff, I think it is for this county board, and I do want to thank staff for the hard work, because we've put them through the wringer, I think, in some regard, to come up with the best possible outcome. It should be a stressful time, and the reason why it should be stressful is because we're redirecting discretionary income. income. For those that don't know what discretionary income is, that's at the end of the month when you've paid all your bills, your housing, your insurances, and everything else, the balance, the amount of money that now you can use for things, such as paying down debt, maybe paying for medical bills, maybe paying for college education, maybe paying for a vacation, if you, you know, if you want to invest in that. That's called discretionary income. And when we raise taxes, we're essentially taking that discretionary income away from the taxpayer, and we're spending it on government entities. And that's, should be something that's very stressful, because last night we had people come forward. We did not have one person come forward in the Truth in Taxation saying, "You should raise taxes." We've had that in the past, not last night. Last night, we had a lot of people that were very concerned about where the taxes were and the amount of taxes they've had. And if you've heard from me once, you've heard maybe 100 times that every single entity makes that, it's just this much, okay, at the county. And the city says it's just this much, and the school district says it's just this much, and the state says it's just this much, and the water district says it's just this much, and the federal says it's just this much, and by the time you add it all up cumulatively, okay, it's not just this much anymore. It's a significant outlay of cash that some people out there cannot afford. Some people cannot afford. And there are some people making 100, $150,000 a year. Good for them. Congratulations. I'm happy for you. And a couple hundred to $400 increase in their tax bill every year, eh, not that big of a deal, okay? There's other people that it's a huge deal, fixed-income people, that cannot afford the increases, and that come in here and take time out of their busy evenings, like last night, and sit here, and they shake their head saying, "You know what? We come up and we say we're opposed to this, and then the votes go down, and everyone votes for it, and we have no recourse." Okay? And next year, hit the repeat button, same thing, over and over and over. And it's frustrating, and it's stressful. So the bottom line is, as the county board, you just saw earlier, saving some money on a refund. You just saw it earlier, 22 elimination of positions, some of which were funded, some of which weren't. These are budget reduction exercises which play into the ultimate amount of levy required to fund the operation that we have here. It's a responsible way of looking at it. I'm very happy that we're able to reduce this. And on the flip side, we could have, we could have had 4%, 5%, 6%, 7% like other counties. But I'll tell you what, that's not something I will ever vote for because I know from my constituents that are out there that are people that are absolutely hurting, and they need the relief.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Look. Further discussion? Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to just say, well, well said, Commissioner Look. It's hard to follow that. I did want to point out that when we first started looking at the levy for next year, we were looking at 8% right off the gate. And with our staff and their leadership and creative ideas and just overall fiscally responsible thinking, we brought it down to the 4.97 for our preliminary budget. But 4.97, that's still a lot of money. That is a big increase for our taxpayers. So last week, when we decided to decrease it another percent by taking the asset preservation monies, which were uncommitted, undedicated monies, I was happy that we could reduce it to 3.97, which I think is still big. Like Commissioner Look alluded to, that's only part of the increase people are seeing on their tax forms. They've got their city and the Met Council and everything else. So I think we have to be as responsible and efficient as we can with every dollar. I still think 3.97 is a lot, but it maintains our current level of services, doesn't close any libraries. We've got sheriffs' positions funded, and I think this was a very reasonable, responsible move to make this week. So I will be supporting the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. I'm going to go to Commissioner West and then Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I can't say anything better than these guys have said it, but I just want to comment that, you know, sometimes people think that we don't care about the money that they have to end up paying, but we really do care. I think, I've said this several times publicly, that I feel like when people are taxed, it's like we're going into their checking account without their permission and deciding what we're going to take. So we, our staff is so dedicated to trying to create, follow our directives, and they did a great job in helping us to come in with this amount of levy. But I also want it to be stated that a majority of the levy that we are voting on today is to give our employees their well-earned raise and the healthcare, health premiums that are going up 10%. So, and again, we're still looking at how we can cut that in the future. Our staff just never stops to follow our directives, to keep everything at a fiscally responsible level.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, I want to make clear, I do not disagree, generally speaking, with this board. I am in alignment with being responsible and conservative. It is very true, this is not my money that we're making these decisions about. And when it comes to budgeting, it's really about the choices, and that's my opinion about why I cannot support the 3.97%. The 4.97%, as Commissioner Brassad said, we started out with an 8% cost of increase, and so that was not going to be acceptable. So to come down to the 4.97, again, I promise, it was well-vetted and a very conservative solution. So to go and take funds from the asset preservation, it's just not what the funds were intended for of how to use. Can we do that? Yes, we can. But now that means in 2021, so I don't want to be an alarmist, we're not going to necessarily have to close a library, but we are going to potentially have to look at making some tough choices in 2021, which will probably mean cutting the level of services that we have now. We're a growing county. It's a cost of doing business, and we need to produce that revenue. And then I'm just going to have one pushback with the Truth in Taxation meeting last night. There was actually one person, she did not say she wanted to increase her taxes, but she did say, "We need more services in the county." And so that was her one comment. But I agree with you for the most part. Everyone was, you know, sharing their struggles about what not only our taxes are doing to them, but collectively. And I do understand that. I take this very much to heart, and I've talked to a lot of conservatives in my district that I really respect and say, like, "Here's my thought about this. What do you think?" And again, to potentially cut it this year and to raise it more or have to, we have to look at raising it more next year, that actually is not a value for them either. And so, again, it's about choices. We differ about this, but that's okay. This is what we were elected to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. I, you know, I'll weigh in. As we directed staff earlier in the year to put together a budget, our number-one priority was maintain services. Don't cut services anywhere. Let's maintain services. What can you do for a budget? And again, it's been stated, it came in at 8%, and they worked hard, really hard, to get it down to 4.97%. And that's what we adopted preliminarily. This board then got to work, had a work session, and there was a lot of input from each and every one of us as to how we could work to reduce it, given some staff recommendations. I think it should be made clear that the 3.97% that we arrived at, or the 1% cut, is a transfer of asset preservation dollars to capital projects. It's important to understand that because I, for one, could never support transferring asset preservation dollars to operational expenses because of their ongoing nature, their repetition over and over annually. Transferring dollars from an asset preservation account wouldn't work for my mentality. And I do have to address the cybersecurity comments, just that our IT department has never been denied something they needed to protect us. We fully fund the IT department for cybersecurity and for investment within security, and I don't ever want to see that change. We will continue to do that. And this board will make the policy decisions going into the next budget year as to whether we're going to maintain services or not. I have never been a part of a city council or a county board that reduced services, nor do I ever want to be. I always want to be on that board that's willing to maintain services and, you know, we'll make cuts where we have to. I think we have a ton of options. You mentioned two options. One was to cut services, one was to raise the levy. I think there's other options. I think we just keep working until we find it, just like we did this year. Transferring money out of an asset preservation account doesn't touch our reserves. Our reserves are on a steady increase. They continue to increase annually. We don't touch reserves. We need to have those. We will never do that. We will work out of the funds we have set up that Commissioner Look had mentioned earlier. And then the last thing I want to mention is, the gal that did speak at TNT mentioned her taxes were a little high and mentioned she wanted to reprioritize where the money's spent, not necessarily spend more, but just reprioritize into a field that she worked in. And that was a pretty fair statement. It's her words, not mine. With that, I am supporting this 3.97 levy, the budget, and the capital improvement plan. The resolution before us is two zero one nine dash one three nine. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll just, yes, again, this, what we're doing right now is to take funds from the asset preservation. So again, we can have other options, but then that will mean other choices further down the line. And just to clarify my example about the cybersecurity, wasn't so much about the policy that you were talking about. What I was saying is, if and when there's a data breach in Anoka County, that will cost us $5 million, that asset preservation is in part for situations like that where we can actually take care of that. And so that is where my example is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will remind folks that we have a cybersecurity insurance policy. So hopefully that'll cover it and not asset preservation. With that said, there is a resolution before us. Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Nay.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that passes. Next on our agenda, actually, before we go, next on our agenda, we're going to step back to the bond issue that we just talked about, the refunding. It's my recollection now, after being pointed out to me, that we never mentioned the amount. We talked a lot about savings. We talked a lot about a lot of things, but I think for the record, we need to indicate that it is $10,115,000. Corey.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is correct. The initial bond that we, back in October, when we approved the bond issue, it was an estimated $10.69 million. With the sale of the bond and due to the market, we were able to sell it at a premium, which allows us to reduce the bond issue many times. So in the resolution, the number that when Commissioner Look talked about it is $10,115,000. So just, let's put that in the record, and so it was, again, a very favorable sale, and we're very happy to have that.
Thank you, Corey. That was just for a correction or addition to the record.
Need another motion on that or no?
I'll turn to Tony. We don't.
Mr. Chair, no, I don't think so. I think it's just a clarification of a previous motion, and I believe now that it's made part of the public record, I don't think you need a motion.
Thank you. Then let's move on to item nine on our agenda to consider Resolution two zero one nine dash one four zero, a resolution adopting a public safety levy for program year 2020. That levy is $1.75 million, or $1,750,000. That's unchanged from last year, and I am looking for a offer of the resolution.
How long for that?
The resolution's been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Look.
For the sake of the public, can you describe the purpose of that levy?
Yes, the public safety levy was authorized by statute for Anoka County to raise money for the public safety data system within Anoka County. Originally, we were going to bond for that project, and this levy was to pay back the bonds. Instead, we used asset preservation funds, and so this levy will pay back the asset preservation fund for some of the dollars that had been expended from it. I'll turn to Corey because I'm sure there's a correction here somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, in the statute, the way this thing was set up, the public safety levy is for projects related to the Joint Law Enforcement Committee, and that Joint Law Enforcement Committee that's put together decides what projects to do, and the county board decides what funding to provide. The public safety data system was the largest project that has been done over the last five years, and we are in the process of paying the county back because the county had funded dollars. In addition to that, it's upgrading our 911 communication towers that allow the radio frequencies and stuff for our 911 centers, so that the dispatchers can reach the cars, the fire departments, police departments, sheriff out in the field. And so we are going through a big refresh for a more digital, and that's like $6 million or something over, and that's in process from now till like 2021, 2022, you know? And then also replacing some, refreshing some of the equipment for the public safety data center. Every five years, you have to, you know, replace the equipment that's behind it because it's a very capital-based levy. So it is encompassing, as Commissioner Schulte said, but as well as these other things. And the J-Luck has voted on these and passed the projects, and now the county board is providing the funding.
Thank you, Corey. And the Joint Law Enforcement Council has approved of this process. We are aware this statute sunsets in 2023. So unless there's action at the legislature between now and then, this tax line item on your tax statement would go away. The Joint Law Enforcement Council has passed a resolution saying that they believe this should continue, that there's a number of expenses within the public safety realm that are unfunded beyond 2023, and they believe that this should be, the sunset should be removed off the legislation. So that is something that we will work towards and talk more about in the coming years, but that is specifically what this line item is for. Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I just want people to be, have some clarification on what that is. I know last night, there was a lot of confusion, maybe. People were coming in saying, you know, "I don't agree with the tax increase. My curbs, you know, had to be done." And it's like, trying to explain, I understand that you're paying for curbs, that's a real cost to you, but that's on a city side of the ledger, not on the county side of the ledger. And so we're trying to break down the property tax bill that you receive to say, the county is responsible for three line items, the county levy, the public safety, which we're talking about right now, and the regional rail levy. County levy, we're at 3.97. Public safety, we're flat. The regional rail, we're dropping by 18%. So in terms of your school, your city, your Met Council, your watershed, your whatever's all the way down the list, none of that, the county can impact. We don't have any jurisdiction over those line items, only the three that are indicated here. And so, again, most people don't maybe care to get involved that much in their property tax statement to figure out the reasons behind the totals at the bottom. They look at the bottom-line figure and say, "My taxes went up 30%," or whatever the case is. While that may be true, you know, when you're at a county meeting, this is what the county can only impact. So I wanted to further clarify for people's reasons.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Look. Further comments? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just speaking of that, I thought the video perhaps was going to play today, but we do have a video on our website that kind of illustrates what Commissioner Look is talking about. It's a great tool. I highly recommend everyone check it out, but it kind of walks you through our 2020 budget and how to look at your property tax statement.
Thank you. It is a good reminder. Our website is plumb full of information, but that's one piece that'll help you, guide you through this conversation. There is a resolution before us. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Thank you. The public safety levy is adopted. Next, we will hold a public hearing to obtain testimony on proposed changes to the capital improvement program for the five-year period from 2020 through 2024. Okay? Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now convene the public hearing, as stated by our chair, to consider adopting the capital improvement plan for the capital improvement plan for 2020 through 2024, including the capital improvements budget for 2020. Notice of this public hearing was published in the county newspaper on November 15, 2019. I would ask a clerk to make that part of the record. My understanding is Budget Director Patty Hetrick will now address the board on the particulars of this plan and proposal. Ms. Hetrick.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo, Mr. Chair, committees of the board. We want to talk a little bit about our capital plan today, and this is an invitation for the public to comment. Our total capital plan this year is $39.3 million. That is for 2020. How we fund this plan, and just to remind people, these are projects over $100,000. They're usually more of a one-time project that go into a plan. We only approve the 2020 budget. We keep for planning purposes the next four years, and then next year, we will consider those other projects. How we fund these projects varies. We get state funding, a lot of this is road and bridge, for 44% of our total cost. Federal funding, again, a lot of road and bridge, is 8%. Cities contribute 6% this year on joint projects, and the county is actually funding 42%. However, I want to make it clear that that is not necessarily levy money. That is money that comes from pre-existing funds. So for example, we have an allocated capital project fund. Asset preservation is paying for part of these one-time projects. We have a county building fund that we already have built into our levy every year of 1.9. We have an IT fund of 1.2 that we've built into our existing levy to pay for these continuous projects. We have a library building fund. We have Parks and Recreation, recycling and resource money, and county transportation tax that's actually restricted, but we can use it for certain projects. So just to be clear, this is not like we're adding that money to our levy. It's existing levy that exists from other years. With that, I just want to highlight a few projects, and then we're going to go to a short video to just explain how the taxpayers can go themselves and explore these projects. Starting with building and equipment, we have six areas. Building and equipment will be our first one I talk about. Generally, most of these projects are for interior finishes, roofs, that type of thing. Our biggest project this year will be to replace the Anoka County Sheriff's Building Generator. And as you can guess, that's a pretty important project to have implemented, and facility staff is great in making sure that we have all the backup plans in place to keep our public safe. Information management, again, several projects of similar cost. Again, a lot of these projects start to replace existing equipment that we know is reaching end of life. One of the biggest software things we are doing this year is the attorney's case management system. I'm sure Mr. Palumbo could comment more if we need to. It's a system that helps us manage a lot of information and keep it at our fingertips and keeps our attorneys very efficient. We don't have any 2020 library projects. We do have what we call the category "other." This is a Rice Creek Compost Site expansion that is paid for by Resource and Recycling money. Parks and Recreation, our biggest project this year overall, will be the Bunker Beach Wave Pool reconditioning and improvement. And that's quite an interesting project fund for all of us, I think. It's one of the big things that attracts people to Anoka County. You will see a video, but I also want to encourage people, we have a pretty lengthy explanation of that project by our Parks Director, Jeff Perry. I think it's really interesting, and I encourage you to go visit that. Road and Bridge, we always have large projects. We can talk about many of them. The biggest thing we do, though, with our CIP is actually maintenance. We use $9 million of our money to make sure that we preserve and maintain the roads we have. In addition, we have several improvements and reconstructions. 125th Avenue, CASA 14. We have Foley Boulevard, CASA 11. We have Hanson Boulevard, CASA 78, from Northdale to Main. And there are several other projects. Again, you can go to the website and explore these, and there's a map on each project to show where it is in your district. With that, I'm going to turn the video on that we saw last night, but this is just the CIP portion. In addition to operating expenses, we have a 2020 through 2024 capital improvement program. Any project over $100,000 is required to be presented to the county board and the public. In 2020, our program for these one-time projects totaled $39.3 million. As you can see, we categorize our projects by area. All projects are funded with existing county funds, federal and state funding, and various other sources. There are six categories of capital improvement projects, including facilities, information technology, road and bridge, parks, libraries, and other. We have a new tool this year that will allow our citizens to explore capital projects in detail. Let me show you how to do your own exploring. On the budget page, click on the capital improvement link. This will bring you to our homepage with all categories of projects. To see projects in a specific area, click on that icon. From there, you can further drill down into a project that you are interested in, such as the Bunker Beach Wave Pool.
Our plan is to expand this area to my right that will ultimately create a 3,000-square-foot lagoon area that will be a zero-depth entry and proceed to an 18-inch depth with a number of water play features.
As you can see, Anoka County has a fantastic team of county commissioners and staff that work hard to ensure that we maintain current level of county services, address increased public safety needs, implement cybersecurity initiatives, preserve and improve the assets of Anoka County, and encourage economic development.
Brass is referring to the budget, which we've already discussed. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hetrick. Does the board have any?
Let me turn me on. There we go. Does the board have any questions for Budget Director Patty Hetrick? Any questions by the board at this time? Seeing none, I would then invite members of the public, anyone wish to come forward from the public and address the board on this matter. I will ask a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to come forward and address the board? And one final time, any member of the public that wishes to come forward, address the board on this matter. Seeing none, there are no members that have come forward, at this point, I would then conclude the hearing and turn the matter back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Palumbo. Then before us, we have the, we're looking for a motion to adopt the capital improvement plan, including the capital improvement budget for 2020, otherwise known as the CIP and CIB. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move it.
Motion by Commissioner Look, second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I just, I want to remind folks that the CIP or the plan is only a plan, and that some of these items are critical, some are deemed to be reaching end of life, and end of life is an estimate. We think that, you know, it can only last so long, it may be required to last a little longer. So when we're talking about future budgets, when we're talking about how do we kind of get down to the numbers where we need to get down to, this is where these plan items can start moving. Like, that generator was, you know, lasting longer than we should have, and I want to come back to the generator, but anyways, or the boiler, or whatever the case is, you know, we can get another year out of the parking lot, or whatever the case may be. So that's where I think this board can take a very active role. With regards to the generator, unfortunately, it's a very large item. It's a critical item. And what we found is that what was specified for the Sheriff's Building was a, I'm going to say it politely, it was a pile of junk, and didn't last. And so what we've moved to is more of a model of subject matter experts through our facilities and maintenance construction, where when a project is going to be considered or plans are being developed, they roll in early and they help decide, this is what we're going to need, because the following items aren't going to last, and this is something that will last. And so now we're making an investment, a rather large investment, in a generator that will in fact last and is light years ahead of the model that was there that really couldn't have sufficed if it needed to. So unfortunately, the models of yesteryear are still kind of catching up to us a little bit in terms of trying to offset what those decisions were many, many years ago. And thankfully, we have people in our facilities, maintenance, construction departments that in fact have experience and know what the proper investments are for us, and we can feel confident in that, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Look, is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that passes. Next, we're going to move on to item 11, which is consider resolution 2019-141, establishing compensation and expense amounts for Anoka County employees, unclassified employees, appointed division managers, department heads, elected officials, and county commissioners for 2020. Again, the resolution's 2019-141. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
The resolution's been offered. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes with a unanimous vote. And lastly, we'll get to item 12, where we'll consider approving a contract to cool air mechanical in the amount of $710,750 for repair or replacement of hail-damaged mechanicals due to the June 11, 2017 hailstorm. By way of explanation, we've gone out for bid on this in the past, and the bids came back incredibly high, higher than we thought were correct. It might have been because there was a lot of hail damage repair going on around the area, and everybody was busy. But in the meantime, we've received this bid, which is very reasonable, and this is covered by insurance. But this is a contract we're looking for approval on, so I do need a motion. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Moved by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? I would just like to compliment Bill Keller in his division for seeing far enough into the future to know that we shouldn't accept those bids last time, and knowing that we could put it off till now, and for all his great work in his division. Thank you, Bill. With no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes. Is there anything else to come before the county board? Seeing none, call the clarissa adjourned.
We'll have regional rail in five minutes. Five minutes for regional rail.